Out of practice. Welcome, everyone. I call the November 1st, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting to order. The main purpose of tonight's meeting is a study session on the 2024 Bothell Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, subareas, cultural resources, and urban design. Before we move on to agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. The City of Bothell is providing an option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available for use to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments on issues not on tonight's agenda. Please limit those comments to three minutes. Please note, the City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment, and please remember this during your comments. Public comments and hearing testimony will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those who comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 PM today, and people wishing to submit written comments were also asked to submit those comments by 3:00 PM. And I believe we have not received anything for this meeting, correct? All right. Those in attendance may also make comments, and we have asked to indicate your desire by signing in the sign-up sheets. And again, we don't have anyone, so I don't expect that either at this point. The Imagine Bothell Notice, the City website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. Video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number. I think I repeated some stuff. For phone-in callers, during staff presentation, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so that everyone can follow along. At this point, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Olson. That's an old one. Pulled up the thing. All right, Commissioner Curd.
Present.
Commissioner Westerbeck.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Robson.
Present.
And Commissioner Andrews is absent and excused. In addition, we have with us tonight Senior Planner Kirsten Mant, and we will expect consultants shortly to assist with the presentation. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn off the sound as there is a delay. Before we begin, I'd like to remind commenters that while you may speak to whatever topic you choose, we ask that if you are a council candidate, you do not use this time to speak to your own campaign. Each person is solely responsible for their comments, but speaking about your own campaign could be a violation of campaign laws, which the Public Disclosure Commission would determine. For commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling our members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand. I will call on you as I see you. This will help avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion or second emotion, or participate in debate. Please mute your microphone when not speaking. So our first agenda item is public comment. City has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. I do not see any members of the public in the meeting. Have anyone? I don't see anyone on Zoom. Anyone in Zoom?
None.
And there's no one in Zoom, so we have no public comments this evening. So with that, we will move on to our next item, the approval of the October 18th minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Curd.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from October 18th.
Is there a second?
I second the motion. Commissioner Westerbeck here. I second the motion.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the October 18th meeting minutes. Any comments on those minutes? Looking around the table and seeing none. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 All right, the minutes of the October 18th meeting are approved as submitted. With that, we move on to our study session, the 2024 Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. And Senior Planner Kirsten, would you like to take that item and introduce your consultant?
Thank you, Chair Kiernan. Apologies in advance, I'm getting over a cold, so I'm a little froggy, but thankfully I have some help tonight for the presentation. So we have with us in person Ben Han from Burke. He's a senior associate with Burke, and he's been working on a lot of stuff for us, but one of them being the re-envisioning of the Red Barn subarea, kind of colloquially known as that, but it's the Country Village, Lake Pleasant, Bothell Everett Highway subarea, where Country Village used to be. And then assisting me tonight to chat about cultural resources, which is currently known as Historic Preservation Element, is Adam Alsobrook. He's our Historic Preservation Consultant. And he's online tonight. So a quick reminder of the timeline where we're at. I will be needing to make a new one of these for the next meeting. We're getting down to the end of the year. So we've been reviewing existing conditions as a part of the environmental review work for the EIS. So that's kind of in flux right now. We've just started reviewing early drafts of goals and policies. And then we're getting ready to prepare the DEIS, so the Draft Environmental Impact Statement. The timeline right now, we have a goal of getting that out at the end of February, and that would be released with the actual draft of the plan at the same time for a 45-day comment period. And then, of course, we have ongoing engagement. We just had our open house last Thursday, which went really well. Like I mentioned before the start of the meeting, we're going to be doing a presentation on that in December. Sarah Frost will put that together. And then for more engagement opportunities, we're going to be continuing to attend the Civic Saturday sessions. Next one is on November 18th. And after that will be January 20th. Sarah Frost and I are community engagement specialists. We'll be there really for the last kind of 10 minutes to do a short presentation and then just be there to talk to folks and take questions. We'll usually hang around for about an hour. And those are at the library in downtown Bothell. And then we have a goal of having our next open house in March to coincide with the release of the public draft, so that can all kind of be happening at the same time while the comment period is open. And then, of course, we have ongoing engagement on EngageBothell.com. We're working on getting up the full kind of hybrid version of the open house for the website for folks that either couldn't attend or wanted to be able to comment in a different capacity. And then just a reminder of some of our upcoming meeting dates and topics. This looks a little different from last time for transportation. We ended up not being able to meet deadlines for transportation stuff for the 15th, so that meeting will not be happening. They're still working on figuring out when to come here to this body to talk about the transportation element, tentatively planning on going to council on December 12th. Hopefully, we'll have more updates on that, so just keep an eye out for the schedule. And then a quick overview of tonight. We're going to be talking a little bit about just subarea planning in general, Bothell's subareas, a lot of much more information on the update to Red Barn, and that's going to be our candidate countywide growth center, just for this Snohomish County portion, but we're redoing the entirety of the subarea. So Ben will be talking a little bit about kind of existing conditions, some sort of analysis of what's there, and then kind of the direction we're thinking of going and some of the engagement work there that's happened and is ongoing. Adam's going to be talking to us a little bit about best practices in cultural resources management, cultural and historic resources management, as well as some suggestions. And then we did have a study session with the Landmark Board last Tuesday to get their feedback on that, so we'll be able to provide some of the Landmark Board's feedback as well. And then I'll be talking a little bit about urban design, both what's currently in the elements and best practices and recommendations that we're proposing for the revision this year. And with that, yeah, so again, no specific action, just looking for feedback as we have been on these topics tonight, and I will turn things over to Ben.
Perfect. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Ben Han. As Kirsten said, I'm a senior planner with Burke Consulting. For those not familiar with Burke, we're a planning and policy shop based out of Seattle, Washington, doing 99% of our work within a state around different government of planning, planning policy projects. And for me, I have a strong interest in urban design and community engagement, so I'm really excited to be here today for the Bothell Complan. I've been.
Recording in progress.
Helping lead the engagement process for the Bothell Comprehensive Plan. And so a few of your faces look familiar. I think I've seen y'all either out in the streets in the summertime or at the open house last week as well. And so been really been enjoying just getting to know the Bothell community and really excited to talk about the Red Barn Subarea Plan. And so just to kind of give a little background for those not familiar with the subarea planning process, a subarea plan is what's considered an optional element of the comprehensive plan. It's something that the City of Bothell has opted to do to do a deeper dive into specific neighborhoods within the city. I think what's really powerful about a subarea plan is that you're able to dive a little bit deeper than you could with a comprehensive plan. Oftentimes, as we all know, they're very citywide, but knowing that sort of the rich sort of micro histories within the city as well needs to be visible, but also recognizing that certain nuances or appearances might be needed as well. And so thinking about that as well, and just showing that there are currently 17 subareas in Bothell, two of them which have a subarea plan already, which are Downtown and Canyon Park. Okay. And so, as you know, in the municipal code, the subarea plan is currently called the Country Village, Lake Pleasant, Bothell Everett Highway Subarea, or Red Barn for short. And so part of our challenge today, we often joke about it, but also I think it's kind of speaks to why it's pressing to have a subarea plan now, thinking through like, what is this area now today? Recognizing sort of the rich history of this area being a destination, but looking forward towards what can this space become in the future as well. And so, and just a reminder that with the Red Barn Subarea Plan, we are actually only looking at the Snohomish County side of the subarea for this planning effort. But I will note that the King County side often does provide some great context of what we've heard to date through engagement and thinking through what I can call like the big ideas for the subarea plan, which will help drive goals and policy recommendations. Before diving in, I just want to say to date that we've completed an existing conditions and trends report. This is pretty much a series of us pulling census data and American Community Survey data around getting to know the Red Barn subarea. I will note that because the geographic area is relatively really small, and so what we've done is that we've pulled data from about four to five census block groups within the census tract that the Red Barn subarea is in. There's a lot more graphs in the full report, and I hope you all get a chance to read it, but just want to give the main highlights. First, just looking at the looking at age of folks within the block groups that we looked at within Red Barn, that there's a significant number of folks, a significant number of kids and folks between 40 to 44 within the Red Barn area. I often love looking at age charts, not just because knowing how old folks are, but you also get to understand that if we're looking through a 20-year comprehensive plan update, this chart is going to shift to the right 20 years. And so when thinking about who's going to be living in this area or thinking about how do you get people to come back, looking at recognizing that these kids will be 20, 25, fresh out of college or maybe starting college or, you know, living their best lives as we all did in our twenties. And so looking at race and ethnicity, the Red Barn area is generally more diverse than the City of Bothell as a whole. In particular, there is larger population identifies as Asian alone, Asian alone compared to the city. We also have information on looking at tenure or homeownership or rentership as well. And finally, looking at household income, the Red Barn Subarea households tend to have a pretty substantially higher median household income compared to the City of Bothell. But it doesn't mean that there aren't other households with differing household incomes as well within this area. So something that we've looked at, but now how do we sort of process that into into big ideas for the Red Barn Subarea? Next, looking at housing and economic characteristics. Just very quickly, wanted to show sort of a little bit breaking down on looking at households by people who own versus people who rent. And so again, it's the, as we said, the Red Barn area is more diverse, so it's not a surprise that people who own their homes in the Red Barn area mimic sort of the same demographic patterns of those with compared to the City of Bothell. This requires a little bit more deeper diving, and I say this with a grain of salt as well, but looking at the 2020 census data for homeownership rates, it was noted most notably that there were no households identified as black or African-American alone or Hispanic, no, excuse me. And the second color, colors always get me, or American Indian, Alaskan Native as well. So something to think to think about in terms of like, what sort of the deeper history here? In equity planning, I always say it's always about complicating the narrative. It's not just about saying X, X, Y, or Z, but why, what are sort of trends and patterns happening? And how do we sort of dive deeper into people's lived experiences? Next, looking at people who rent. It's a relatively more in terms of looking at white versus non-white populations in Red Barn. There are sort of similar breakdowns, but if there's a much more diverse sort of pattern in terms of looking at households of color within the Red Barn area who rent. And so just just offer a comparison between homeowners and renters. Finally, this should feel familiar to you all from the middle housing analysis, but just looking at displacement risk within Red Barn, I didn't highlight it, but it's that census tract in the middle. I wish this mouse has not reached point, okay. But yeah, it's directly in the middle. In terms of comparing to the rest of the city, it sort of sits in the middle in terms of having a composite social economic vulnerability, but also and sort of in the middle around feasibility as well. And so for, just to recap, I'll just say that this analysis looked at only population factors in determining a social economic vulnerability. And so recognizing certain populations who would either have a harder time with housing. And so it looks at BIPOC populations, people who identify Hispanic or Latino, of any race, people five years and older who do not speak English very well, folks with disabilities, people over 25 years old with an educational attainment less than a bachelor's degree, and foreign-born populations. And so when thinking about displacement risk, it's not just about a physical displacement, but we often think about a cultural and economic displacement as well. And so one of the key recommendations that you'll see is around really why the importance of community engagement is needed and to reach out to households to Red Barn, but also looking to you all for advice on what an inclusive process can look like as well. Just noting some of our communication that we've done. This is fresh from our open house last week. Just to kind of give, if you all saw us as you came in, we asked two real questions about Red Barn. One, what makes Red Barn special? Sort of the two big themes that emerged was location, just being close to downtown, being situated just south of Canyon Park, close to 405. But also a lot of people noted the green and open space, which you'll see as a running theme through this presentation in terms of the people really value the need to connect the built environment with the natural environment. And how do you sort of balance that as housing growth becomes a huge priority as well? We also asked what folks' big idea are for Red Barn. We said, you know, please don't think about the, you know, how feasible or not it is. You know, what's your big pine sky idea? And to give a high-level summary, a lot of people asked for transportation improvements, particularly around bike and pedestrian safety. If you see a star, it means it's an idea that's other, this reiterating an idea that was said already. A lot of people noted the desire for the preservation of the wetlands. This is in particular to the open, to the wetland space in the King County portion of Red Barn Subarea. A lot of people shared a lot of fond memories of sort of this informal activation of space by walking through the wetlands. And just having that in their backyard was seen as a real amenity. And so trying to, again, when thinking about new housing growth, think about the importance of what the wetlands contribute to, not just climate resilience in Bothell, but its impact on salmon and orcas as well. And so, and finally, the last main idea we heard was exploring amenities and services. You know, there were a few folks, it was actually just a kind of aside, but about half the people we met at the open house knew about Country Village and Red Barn, and the other half didn't. And so I thought it was a really interesting, not a scientific takeaway, but a very interesting empirical observation around sort of where does Subarea could or can go? And so sort of like, what are sort of the opportunities to really turn Red Barn as a destination, given its location? Next, we'll go into what our three big goals are. I will say this is where I'm looking to get your feedback the most on today. These three goals will essentially guide what our policy recommendations will be. And so I would treat them almost like a comprehensive plan goal. And our next steps will be to develop policies around each of these goals. And so to skip to the end, I'll be asking you these questions. We'll come back to these questions at the end, but I want to set you all up now so you can think about it while I go through each of them. But was there a particular, I'm curious to ask, like if there was a particular goal that resonated most with you? Do you think there was something that was not captured in these goals that should be addressed? And when thinking about sort of how do we develop policies that are truly reflective of the folks who live in Red Barn currently? Like what does what does that inclusive process mean like? And selfishly, can you help? Because I think doing engagements always, as an outsider, as a consultant, it's always, I have a lot of like neutral leverage I can bring to the table, but I don't carry the relationships. And so really, I think when thinking about engagement, the best, really truly the best strategy is to is to work within your circles and expand out to through our networks. And so it's a real-life game of six degrees of Kevin Bacon, as I joke a lot. So our first main goal is really centered around displacement. So how, we should really look towards minimizing displacement through community engagement. And the rationale behind this idea is that we're still learning a lot about who the people who live in Red Barn are. And I think there's a need for complicated narrative behind, you know, like what the census data has been showing us, but also what has been the actual lived experiences of households in the area. This, again, additively, a lot of folks that I talked to who spoke what makes Bothell special is this really sort of they've been either longtime Bothell residents or enjoy the long-term affordability that they, that the city has provided for them when they moved to the city. And so how do you sort of continue to understand like, what keeps people in Bothell? And like what, and sort of understanding what the challenges have been as well? Again, as I mentioned with the Asian cohort slide, you know, as time passes, you will see, we'll see those kids who are living in Red Barn now grow up into adults. And so what does affordable housing look like in our 20s? And, you know, if we all go back to, for me, I was making $900 a month as an AmeriCorps volunteer. And so, you know, couldn't really live much anywhere. And so, again, thinking like affordable housing in Bothell could really look like what, what does that look like for the kids who live in the city today? And examples of understanding displacement strategies could be, understanding anti-displacement strategies would be partnering with social service providers and cultural institutions. The second big idea is really answering, again, at the beginning, we were joking around around what on earth do we call the subarea? And a part of me really wants to ask you all, what do we call this subarea? And, you know, what, you know, how do we build, build a new visibility for the subarea, special district through economic development and capacity building opportunities? And by capacity building, I mean really targeting towards the social service providers or the health providers or cultural organizations that, 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 that live in Red Barn today or in within the cultural proximity of this area. And look, and again, thinking about location, you know, we are well situated to be close to the downtown area and all the services that downtown provides, but also being close to a lot of the employment opportunities and transportation access opportunities that Canyon Park provides as well. And with the increasing access with community transit, with expansion, what, what, what are the opportunities to turn Red Barn not into a thoroughfare to get between Canyon Park and downtown, but a destination in its own right as well? And so thinking about example strategies, including thinking about placekeeping. Placekeeping is a little different from place-making in that how do you sort of retain the narratives of people who live there today, but also bring visibility to the sort of regional context of Bothell? Why, why the subarea matters? Next, sample strategy could include small business retention and technical assistance. What are sort of the business, what are sort of technical assistance needs of businesses there today? And again, you know, if there, how to describe Bothell, Bothellites in a single sort of character trait is their desire for parks and open space and their love for orcas and salmon. And so I think, again, like thinking about sort of the impact of thinking about how wildlife and fish move through the City of Bothell and while preserving sort of the resources and natural amenities that also protect us from things like flooding, heat island effects, extreme precipitation, and as we see more and more today. The final big idea is a planner one. Bothell Everett Highway is mobility spine for the subarea. And so what does it look like to support land uses and transportation improvements to increase social and economic opportunities? Again, the rationale behind this is recognizing that there are substantial transportation improvements coming into area and housing. There has been significant housing development already. But what does it also look like to balance housing growth with preserving open space, recognizing that it's not one of those things where everyone can have their own own single-family home, 5,000 square feet? And how do you think through around housing diversity within that area? And just thinking through strategies such as trail planning, to think about the regional pedestrian network within Bothell, a safe, thinking about a safe route to school program, especially with elementary school nearby, what does look like to discourage auto-dependency? And sort of a high-level way to summarize, thinking about 15-minute city strategies or even 20-minute city strategies, meaning like, how far can I walk in about 15, 20 minutes and have all the resources that I need to live? So with that, I'll go back to my questions that I asked you all. And we'd love to get feedback and take some notes around what you've seen today. And we'd love to sort of mind-meld with you all in terms of what additional sort of goals should we be thinking about for the Red Barn Subarea? So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, thoughts, responses to the questions? Commissioner Westerbeck?
Good, good. I'll just comment, I mean, you have a little bit of a jump on this because the city's currently designing the downtown to Red Barn area connection on 527 with the multi-way, I don't know what we call it, the multiple, multiple mobility corridor, you know, buses, pedestrians, bikes, and everything. I think it's going to be transformative for this area because right now it's sort of choked off or it's disconnected from both Canyon Park and downtown, so this could be big. And then I, I've always thought that the Safeway complex, I mean, it's good they put it there, but they've never really filled all those, those commercial spaces in there. Because that makes me think there's not enough housing right next to it. They need to really kind of go full-on density. And, I mean, they've already got it there. They were already committed to it. So, I don't know, build apartments in the parking lots on the edges, whatever. It should be a spot almost like the way some of us are envisioning like rail stations, where we should really build those up, so create enough people there. And, you know, that would obviously take some negotiations with developers and people who own those properties. But, you know, as a goal within our longer-range planning, how can you? You've already made the move. So as a city and as a developer, how do we start to, instead of just be circled by single-family homes? Of course, we have the townhouses and the development that Pulte did at, at former Country Village. So that's a good start because it's within walking distance from the street. But I just always felt like that Safeway area and the immediate areas around that, neighborhoods around that could be targeted for a lot more walkable density. I mean, I think that's the future. It's going to happen someday, whether it's when I'm 80 or 180 in the ground. It's going to happen eventually, so should we just look at what that would take?
Are there commissioner comments? Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here.
Claire next. No, no, go right ahead, and Commissioner Robson next.
Okay.
All right, Claire.
Yeah. Yeah, and Ben, would you mention your title again so I can address you properly?
I'm a senior planner with.
Thank you, senior planner. This was great. This was so exciting, and it's really fun to dig in. I really liked how you brought up some of the visuals and the big issues with aging, for example, and projecting that. My first question is just getting a little more context on why are we doing Red Barn first? Is it because of the countywide growth center that we're prioritizing it? That decision that needs to be made?
Yeah, I think it's a mixture of the identification as a candidate countywide growth center and wanting to make sure that we're meeting the thresholds to qualify once the plan's adopted. And then also recognizing, as Ben mentioned, just how much that area has changed, that the current subarea plan and particularly a lot of the regulations in the municipal code. And then also recognizing, as Ben mentioned, just how much that area has changed, that the current sub area plan and particularly a lot of the regulations in the municipal code that come from the sub area plan, don't really reflect what's there anymore. So within the current sub area plan, there's a special district called the Red Barn Special District. And there's a lot of urban design and building design requirements that are supposed to be really to tie in the area to Country Village. Currently, there's only one building that still has some of that design in it's the, the Grease Monkey. So a lot of this is just reflecting the fact that the area has changed, it needs to refresh. We want to make sure that we're being intentional about setting it up for growth and as well as meeting the requirements as a candidate growth center.
Yeah, thank you, senior partner, about explaining why this one goes first.
Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. I just wanted to, yeah, I echo Commissioner, Commissioner Greshamson that this is super exciting. I love naming things. I really, I noticed on some of the suggestions that you got from the public that one of them mentioned a trolley that goes from one area to the other, potentially to Canyon, I think they, they mentioned from Canyon Park to downtown. But I think that this would be a good opportunity that if we did have a trolley or some kind of mobile bus, light, light bus, small bus, I can't think of the name of that right now, that did start there and take people to downtown, it would increase visibility a lot for both things over in Safeway. And the Safeway complex is just where I'm envisioning it and, and downtown. So it would really increase, making that a more popular sort of destination. And plus like, I don't know, trolley way sounds so cute, can't even stand it. So I thought that that was a really good idea to increase visibility. The other thing that just seems the most natural for me of creating a sense of place, because you mentioned this before, was Lake Pleasant, it capitalizes on that idea of green space and salmon. And you know, it's, it's just charming overall. So that's, that's another potential name.
Yeah, I like that.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Kurd?
Thanks, thanks for the presentation so far. I really appreciated especially all the demographic information. I think that that really sets a good foundation for the discussions. One of the kind of goals that was identified that spoke really clearly to me was anti-displacement. So the park around Lake Pleasant is an especially interesting location. There aren't a lot of cities that have temporary housing options for people. And that is kind of a unique area that is really worth kind of appreciating and knowing that it's, it's ingrained into the, the fabric of this sub area. And so I'm really curious about how that can be kind of reflected in like policy level discussions. Because there aren't, I mean, it's a privately owned park and it doesn't, it's not afforded the same protections as mobile home parks are in the city. And yet it is still a pretty critical affordability level that isn't provided elsewhere. So I'm really curious about that, that really, that goal really spoke to me and I'm appreciative that you're pulling those things out. The other thing that really spoke to me was, all of the goals did. We have a couple of historic, historic kind of mom and pop style businesses there. And there are, you know, like hair stylists and kind of cultural anchors for the black community in Bothell despite not being reflected in the demographic data, which I think is really curious. And also another thing important and worth mentioning and identifying as a key objective is anti-displacement, anti-displacement measures for those cultural anchors and, and community spaces. I'm still not necessarily sure I understand how that's going to translate into the policies where we figure out, you know, as Commissioner Westerbeck said, there are some retail spaces, small retail spaces already in the sub area that are quite unaffordable. And so I'm really curious about what makes an affordable retail space and affordable commercial space and how that can be translated in terms of policy discussions based off of this key kind of goal or theme. So that's another thing. Then the last thing I wanted to touch on was the natural environment in this area. So I always have thought it's kind of curious that we call Canyon Park Canyon Park because we actually have a canyon and it's in the sub area. And so it's really tightly constrained next to the highway, especially in the middle portion where Horse Creek has, ancient Horse Creek has carved down into the windy little narrow road that now we have retaining walls on either side and we're spending millions of dollars trying to widen it for buses. So I really appreciate the natural environment there. I also appreciate that we are so excited about maintaining these green and open spaces. And I think that's important because historically, we may have focused more development in these areas because they're flat or they're adjacent to roads, whereas now we understand that they focusing growth in, in areas that are subject to flooding or are kind of natural sinks for a lot of stormwater is kind of a, not, a very, not consistent with environmental justice practices. And so I think that I, I like the idea of using the wetlands and using the kind of headwaters of Horse Creek, if you could call it that, as kind of a natural element that ties the sub area together. Also noting that transportation projects and the ability to access the sub area is heavily restricted by these natural features. And so knowing that they may need to be modified a little bit in order to provide more access and also understanding that this comprehensive planning process is kind of like long distance planning, whereas we, there's no real good safe route to get to some of the retail spaces and centers and cultural anchors right now from downtown or from Canyon Park. So we have some work to do and I think there are like maybe some temporary things that we could do that might be able to build more safe transportation routes for people outside of cars in the sub area or access from the other kind of plateaus. But I, all three, I guess all, all three of the, the goals kind of resonated. So that's where I'm at.
Other commissioner comments, questions? So when I looked at it, two things, one is I never knew there was a Haynes open space. And I've been around here a long time. So that kind of surprised me. I have watched that wetland area and it's, it's really interesting and working around that will be, be important. But that surprised me, there was a designated open space there. So that, that was news. The other thing I looked at, we talk about displacement and I look at this age cohort chart and I see a big dip in twenties. And that's consistent with what I've seen the experience of my kids' friends are, that basically young people can't afford to live in Bothell. We need that affordable housing to be able to maintain that population here. People look to move out and get on their own and it's expensive. And that, that's what that dip says to me. There may be other things going on, but it's something that I think we really want to keep top of mind as we, we move forward on this. I, I think the idea of linking Canyon Park to downtown is an important one. There are some opportunities there. And other cities have, you know, shuttle buses that go back and forth. So I think that'd be something good that would link it, particularly when the south part of Bothell Everett is developed. And right now that unless you're in a car, that's not, you, you can't travel that. You can't walk it. Riding your bike is challenging at best, if not death defying. So really upgrading that transportation part and linking that to the rest of the city is important. But it's interesting. So thank you for, for your work on this and look forward to seeing where it goes. Other, other comments? Commissioner Gustafson?
Sarah Gustafson here. I have a few more comments. Love what everyone has been saying so far. I think I'd like to focus on the visibility aspect. I would love to see some information in the packet about why, for now, we're calling it Red Barn so we can help spread that historical narrative, maybe a little paragraph or some photos of what went before. And perhaps even a little description of why we're using the lines that we're using to designate neighborhoods. Where do these get passed down from? And some of the questions about Red Barn and, and the naming, I loved Commissioner Robson's idea of Lake Pleasant. And I think naming something can really bring people together and provide a hook for community outreach. And it might be a way to further introduce this project to people. Can we have a naming suggestion outreach project with people? And that will give them a chance to figure out what they like most about the city. I think we need to be sensitive about it because of course, who gets to name things is a big issue. And I know the city has been trying to find a name for the Wayne Golf Course for quite some time and haven't gotten there. So I think we'd have to be very sensitive there. But I think in doing so, we could build our muscle as a city, okay, who do we need to reach out to? What are the cultural anchors here that we would need to figure out in order to rename this place? And in doing so, how can we bring them into the processes, full partners and learn from them as well? Is there anything else I get really excited about the visibility aspect? Yeah, I'm also really curious about the immigrant population and the population of new Americans. I think we were able to look at the ethnic demographics and I think the immigrant population was referenced in the displacement risk. But I would love to see that on its own. But thank you so much. This has been great.
Other comments, questions? You want to flip through your three goals one more times? We can all take a look and see if anyone has a favorite or wants to call out which resonates. Up, wait, Commissioner Robson has her hand up.
Thank you. I was just wondering, when we're talking about displacement, what are our biggest factors, causes of that? As we talk about the changes we want to make to this area, what should we be considering if we want to avoid displacement?
That's kind of the million dollar question to answer, if, if I may be honest with you. I think displacement often takes a lot of different forms depending on certain histories of people who live in a city. You know, this, and only I'll just say through, through the information that we have right now, you know, with the displacement risk analysis that was done for, for the city of Bothell that sort of the two main categories that seems to stand out is that there is a larger, there is a larger BIPOC community that lives within Red Barn. And I think most notably, they also noted a higher, a higher Asian community as well. And so I think, I think there's more information to learn in terms of like who, who, how do we disseminate that information? And I think it's also worth sort of noting that like just because there's a high BIPOC community doesn't necessarily mean that like everyone's struggling as well. And so how do we sort of unpack sort of like the model of the sort of like, like just even like just breaking down thirty percent of the, of the API population is a very challenging task in itself as well. So you know, I think the other interesting point too is that we're, we're actually seeing like a significant number of households that makes a lot more money than average Bothell household as well too. And so it's really interesting sort of like what's, I think, for me, my next steps with this project, just kind of getting ahead of myself, is really trying to think through like what's, what are sort of additional gate strategies that we can do? By things sort of what are some additional like creative ideas that we can do to potentially reach folks we haven't reached out to? And it could be, maybe involves like reaching, working with the Uta Bothell or, or Cascadia College, but also it could be worth doing a little bit of legwork as well. And so as, as Commissioner Kurd mentioned, that there are a few other businesses there that may not have, be as visible as sort of like the Safeway, but could have a potential more regional draw than, than we know. So. Oh yes, and the ask was to go through the idea, so here we are. So I'll just let you all read.
You gonna say some?
Commissioner Westerbeck?
Christian Westerbeck here. Well, I think that Chair, the Chair hit on something there, which was young people, as soon as they get done with high school and college are being displaced. Can't stay home maybe, but there's no apartment for you. There's no single room occupancy, there's no micro units or anything like that. And we've already targeted this like the, like the Country Village area I mentioned earlier for higher density. It's along a highway and we're trying to get away from, you know, high noise, high pollution and stuff. But starts to beg like, is this a good place? It's not downtown, so the land's not worth quite as much. So maybe the per acre price is a little lower. Maybe it's a good, good spot for us to start saying, we've got groceries, we've got transit, we've got a higher and middle income housing where, and we're going to have to start doing HB twelve twenty one anyway. This maybe this is a good spot to start looking at diverse housing types, targeting it for that specifically. I know we're going to be doing that with the new land use maps and everything like that, but just makes me think like, like Kevin said, you know, we've got, we can see where the gap is. And so, and it's not very far from the university and Cascadia, who have come here and pleaded with council to start doing more attainable housing. So anyway, just, just comes to mind like, we kind of know now what we need to build there. And granted, we need to build it all over the city, don't get me wrong, but this is really, you know, it's, it's close to so many things that people could walk and ride, walk transit and bike to if they can't afford to have a car, which will be increasingly harder to, you know, pay for in time. So anyway, just some thoughts.
Okay, so that's the first idea displacement. We talked about that a bit. Second one. Visibility is a special district. Comments on that one? Okay, and then the final. Mobility. And I, I think that, I'll speak for myself, I think that's very important here. I mean, given the, the highway right through it, the transit that's coming, really upgrading now for the walking and the bicycling to kind of round out what's available, I think would be very important in this. Other commissioner comments?
Commissioner Jones, I guess I would offer that the, by improving the pedestrian and bike routes, that along with the increased transportation that we expect in the area will help to bring visibility. I think, of course, with all goals, they overlap, right? And so when we look at the minimized displacement, I completely agree that we need to, to provide different types of housing so that we could have a more diverse age group demographic. However, I wonder if there's a way to learn from the current population, what are the elements that they would like to stay even as we densify the area to avoid them from being displaced, right? Or them displacing themselves, right? Because they want to leave and find another area. So I wonder if there's a way to, to frame the questions to them, to find out what, what will keep them there even as it gets denser? If that makes sense.
I just want to say I love that question. And I think that's such a great premise moving forward, thinking about just planning in general. So. So I just want to just respond to, I think, just kind of hearing Commissioner speak today. I do think there is a fourth big idea emerging around housing. And so I think one edit, one feedback that I'm getting, I'd like to incorporate is just thinking through around the idea of affordable housing. Something all worked with a little bit better, but you know, affordable housing, thinking about potentially for future generations of folks living in Bothell. And so I think that's such a great way in tackling sort of, particularly with the new housing requirements through state legislature. And so that's one thing I am hearing, I'm also hearing too with the pedestrian bike improvements that, you know, like, I know there is some potential for Bothell Everett Highway to expand a little bit, but sort of in the reality, I don't want to talk on this in a minute, but I think just thinking about like, how do you increase capacity for people to move is not going to be through widening the highway. And so it's really sort of about like, how do we get more people to be able to walk and bike to the buses as well? What's not shown on the map is that we've done an urban design analysis of the existing condition, of the existing conditions of Red Barn as well. And you know, the state, and not the state, the city, the city policy does a great job sort of identifying sort of boulevards. And Red Barn actually has two boulevards that cut through the area through Bothell Everett Highway, of course, as one, I believe, to 24th, the street that were, that crossed with where Country Village was, was another boulevard. And so I think there's a lot of unique opportunities. 240th? Yeah, 240th, thank you. Numbers are confusing. But my point being that I think there's a lot of great, like, there's a lot of good bones in the current goals and policies that really supports mobility to Red Barn as a countywide, potential countywide center.
Commissioner Kurt.
Yeah, I just was thinking about engagement strategy. So this might be jumping ahead a little bit, but there are a lot of kids in the sub-area. And I have noticed that the school bus stops are very well attended by both adults and kids at the school bus times. And so if there was a best bang for your buck, to go out and talk to people, it'd probably be at school pickup or drop off in the mornings at the bus stop locations on Bothell Everett Highway.
I will say that will definitely require permission from the school district as well. And so, yeah, I've done a lot of school engagement in the past and that's the number one. And I'm like, yes, I agree. And so, yeah, I do agree. I think there's a lot of great opportunities with school students as well.
And the comment was made about the income in this area. I suspect that if you looked at where new single-family housing is, you see a concentration of high income. Because there's nothing under a million and a million is cheap. So where there's new houses, there are high income. You know, preserving existing stock might help to keep diversity or different types of housing that's more affordable. But where what goes in is single-family housing, you're skewing the income levels high. Other questions, comments? So did you get useful feedback? Anything else you'd like to ask of us?
Please email me your ideas for what do we call the sub-area? No, this has been great. I think this has been a great exercise in sort of testing sort of what we learned. And so I think there's always so much that we, only so much that we can do by just looking from a computer. And so I think really having input from people is really critical and having an accept and developing these policies. And so with these three ideas, plus this fourth around housing, I think will create a good framework for us to think through on what policy recommendations look like. And so thank you so much for being so thoughtful. Yeah.
I'll add a little bit more, if I may. I've been, you know, looking at the 15-minute city idea for a long time and very into it and studied it a lot. This is not traditionally going to lend itself to 15-minute cities, but I think we could have, I just have thought about this a lot because Bothell, we have a lot of low density, spread out suburbia. We're not going to go back to a Dutch village model, right? As much as I would love that, but you can't tell everyone to go, you could sign a move to the village, we're going to mow down your houses. No, it's not going to happen. But we have, you know, when we do subdivisions and cul-de-sacs and stuff, the way we've done the, you know, push everything to the collector model, which we're finding out is not necessarily the best idea for us as a country. But this is something I said to other planning efforts, like when we were doing Canyon Park and stuff. This would take the cooperation of developers and owner and HOAs and stuff. But we could do sort of this Bothell suburban version of 15-minute cities where we see all these cul-de-sacs and stuff. If we could start to link them up with trails, footpaths, paved, woodchips, whatever. You do see them out in some communities, you know, they put them in for people to walk. Kids would use them. They could stay safe from cars. That's my greatest fear for my kids when they go out. I said, you're more likely to get hurt by traffic crossing a road than anything else. That's my biggest concern when they walk out and go, you know, and I want them to have some independence, go get ice cream and meet their friends and stuff. It'd be great to be able to connect up all these neighborhoods because when I, where I grew up, we had some of those, some of the newer neighborhoods were connected, or they had informal ones like done power lines and stuff like that. But, you know, people of all ages would use those. And, you know, you might not be able to ride your bike on all of them, but you could at least walk them and they might be, you know, eventually could have some lights on them and things like that. But they could be sort of a suburban version of a 15-minute city. So you could go from the new homes where Country Village is, you know, down to the Safeway, whatever safely, to meet with friends or go grocery shopping or something without having to get over onto Bothell Everett Highway, which most of us have to do right now if we want to connect up. So it's just this sort of hybrid 15, Bothell version of a 15-minute city, maybe. Probably nothing you guys haven't already thought of, but like I said, it would be a rat's nest of cooperation required.
I love that. I think it's such a great suggestion, thinking through around like, how do you sort of apply sort of the concepts of 15-minute cities? You know, or even like a 20-minute city in some cases to Bothell and so.
Yeah, yeah, like, we're not going to have that. So what's the next best thing?
Yeah, I just want to point out, because I think you'd find it interesting, there are actually a couple of those.
I'm sure.
Throughout the city. I know Jeff Smith, for example, he asked for that in a project he worked on, so he's pointing out some of them to me. So it is cool where they do exist. It'll be great to have more.
And you're right. I mean, I do see them every now and then when I'm out and I know you see them in Redmond, Issaquah and all kinds of communities have built those in. So, you know, we get like, you know, 10 houses at a time here and then 20 here and 30 there. And then I'm all thinking about, hey, how can I link up with those guys, you know? We're just not seeing that. So the city may have a program where they start to go out over time and be like, we'd really like to link you guys up and can we get an easement here, you know, to connect up your neighborhoods or something? They usually don't want cars to go through those, but people, you know, I was, I grew up in Woodinville and we had a bunch where they were connected by paths, formal or informal, and you could not drive a car through them, which you could do otherwise would take you like a five mile drive to go around, like between Redmond and Woodinville, but you could walk it in about 20 minutes.
I just love that idea. It also helps with the migration of animals.
Yes.
Which helps with our urban forests in the area. So it's just, yeah, there's a lot of synergy there.
And probably relatively affordable as long as the legal issues can be worked out. Thanks.
Other comments? Mr. Gustafson?
Yes, Sarah Gustafson here. I love this idea. This is great. I do wonder if Jeff Smith has already done this work, is there a way we could get a map of the existing footpath? I have a little map that I'm using on my phone where I put a star whenever I find one. But do we have a?
I would say given our GIS capacity right now, I don't.
Yeah.
It's something we could maybe ask for in the future, although that would be really cool.
Yeah.
But I don't know how quickly we could get something like that. It would probably, it would probably rely on like LiDAR data to figure out where some of those spaces are. I'm just trying to think how we would even identify them without it just being the planners going around and just putting ones on a map that we know about.
Future planner intern project.
Yeah, interesting, yeah.
All right, anyone else? Looking around the table. Well, thank you, Senior Planner Han, you stimulated some. Ben? We try to respect people's titles and expertise, so we thank you for the presentation. You stimulated some interesting conversation. I hope you took some stuff out of it you can use moving forward. I'd suggest if people do have further thoughts that you email them to Senior Planner Mant, who would then forward them to you. So we can keep the communication going that way. And with that, I think we would bring this item to a close, seeing no other.
Thank you. It's been a real pleasure.
Thank you. So our next item is reports from staff. Anything for us?
We have more presentation as well.
Oh, oh, that was just the sub areas. We've got resources in urban design. Okay, okay.
Adam is patiently waiting in the wings to talk about.
I was just looking at the one number on my agenda.
No worries. So next, we're going to be talking a little bit about cultural and historic resources. So our current element is called Historic Preservation Element. We are proposing to change that to Cultural Resources to just really reflect the breadth of the importance of history of the city to be not just the things that we've typically considered important in the past. So with that, I will pass things on over to Adam. And Adam, let me know when you want me to advance the slides and I can manage that for you.
I like your, I like your clay pot.
Yes, so these are continuing to roll out our icons, our draft icons we have for the plan. So this would be the potential icon for this element.
Well, maybe it might be more appropriate for me to refer to it as a basket, but, but anyway. Just very briefly to introduce myself, my name is Adam Alsabrook. I am Senior Architectural Historian with Will Emmett Cultural Resources Associates. We are a full-service cultural resource management firm. We have an office in Portland and an office in Seattle. I work out of the Seattle office. And we were just recently engaged by the city of Bothell to administer the city's historic preservation program. And so we've been, we've been working with city staff on the cultural resources element and also working with Burke to consult on the components of what we are calling the Cultural Resources Element. So some of our top recommended priorities are, number one, is hidden history. And the easiest way to explain this is that, you know, the original, the city of Bothell became a certified local government in, excuse me, excuse me, in 1987. And the original landmark preservation code was enacted in 1987. It was recodified again and it was recodified in 1996 and it was recodified once again in 2011. And so interestingly enough, around each of the times, you know, within the same, you know, time span of each of the code recodifications, there were efforts to identify historic resources in the city of Bothell. And, you know, there have been several surveys. I was actually just, just to kind of refresh my memory, I was looking at the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation's website, you know, that has the GIS information on all the previous surveys. And, you know, geographically speaking, the entire, you know, city, including, you know, in both King and Snohomish Counties has been, has been surveyed several times before. And so we've got a pretty good sense of, of, you know, this literally visible landmarks. And now we're starting to get into what we're calling hidden history, which are things that in some cases, we mean that very literally. They're behind fences, they're behind hedgerows, they're set far back from the road, they're on a large acreage property and shielded from public view. However, you know, local informants, people who are, you know, interested in the identification of cultural resources may know of cultural resources that have not yet been identified. And so the, our other recommended, our, excuse me, our other general recommended priority is to really focus on local landmarks, to increase the knowledge of local landmarks that are, that are not designated yet, but potentially could be. And to also, you know, take the hidden history component and the local landmark component and to work on additional citywide survey to help support these goals. Next slide, please. So our immediate recommendations are, first and foremost, number one, work to update the information that's in the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation inventory. And so this database is GIS-based and it's available online. However, you know, the information is only as good as the original information that was fed into it. And so in many cases, there's some cases where we need to update this information. You know, particularly because the Bothell inventory that's maintained on this GIS platform is regulatory. And so it's incumbent on both city staff who are processing permit applications and also we as the city's historic preservation consultant to, you know, keep on top of the status of buildings and other, you know, building structures and other cultural resources that are in the inventory, you know, to, you know, just make sure that we are acting on the most current information. The other recommendation that we have is to also review the status, review the current status of what, what, excuse me, review the status of local landmarks that are listed in the Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks. And so I believe at last count, there were 16. And one has been demolished that we know of. And that is the historic bridge down by the Wayne Golf Course. So, you know, we just need to make sure, you know, kind of what, what that existing status is. And then the other thing too is to also look at stronger alternative approaches to what have been our traditional designation programs. At the national level, the National Register of Historic Places, which some of you may be familiar with, has been a tool for the identification, documentation and designation of properties that are, that are eligible for that recognition. And then at the local level, excuse me, at the state level, you've got the Washington Heritage, excuse me, sorry, I need to speak. Excuse me, it's the Washington Heritage Register, which includes properties that are listed in the National Register of Historic Places. Some properties are actually just listed in the Washington Heritage Register, but it's not a very, it's not a regulatory arena. And then the Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks is the local landmarking program, you know, that does have teeth and procedures and regulations that go along with it. And so there's been a lot of interest at both ends of the spectrum. We've been approached by individuals who want very, very, very strong protections on significant cultural resources. And by strong, I mean like any means possible to prevent the demolition or insensitive alteration of a particular cultural resource. And then on the other end, you have people who are interested in recognizing the cultural value of a particular place, which may not necessarily be either eligible for local historic designation or is not desirable. Like, you know, particularly in Bothell, because the owner's consent is required for that Bothell landmark to be listed in the Bothell Register of Historic Landmarks. And so, you know, we've been approached by individuals who are interested in some sort of recognition that doesn't have an onerous regulatory nexus. Next slide, please. So some of the, we received some excellent feedback from the Landmark Preservation Board, excuse me. We presented this at the last, at the last meeting, you know, during their work session that was specifically held for the comprehensive plan and update them on the comprehensive plan. that was specifically held for the comprehensive plan and update them on the comprehensive plan. And, you know, some, you know, some of the really intriguing comments that we received from the board members was number one, to increase the visibility of the landmarks that we do know of. You know, so that would be designate, you know, both designated and in some cases, undesignedated cultural resources. And, you know, a number of different ideas were discussed about, you know, placing interpretive signage in parks, you know, QR codes and on the interpretive signage. And then, also particularly, potentially placing interpretive signage at other places where people congregate and use, you know, rather than just kind of the proverbial sign on the side of the road that might, you know, really only be geared toward, toward motorists, if they're even paying attention. The other thing too is to also increase the breadth of the history that is highlighted. You know, there's, there's a number of underrepresented communities that have not really been talked about in the, in a lot of the discourse on cultural resources to date. And so, it's, you know, continuing to delve into, into that aspect right there. Next slide, please. And so, you know, to, to kind of piggyback on what I had said about, you know, some of these alternative designations and also, you know, how we're treating some mitigation concepts is, number one, consider expanding the concept of what we would require with new developments. You know, that could be, you know, identification, documentation and, and potential designation of landmarks. The other thing that has been talked about at the state level, at the state nonprofit level, the Washington Trust for Historic Preservation is reportedly exploring, expanding a preservation easement program for individuals in groups, you know, who own cultural resources, who are interested in potentially placing a preservation easement on the property to, to further protect that property from demolition and insensitive redevelopment. And then, also continue to search for all available funding for, to support these cultural resource identification, documentation and designation programs. Next slide, please. Oh, so that, that is the, that is the end of this particular presentation. Kirsten, remind me, in the board packet, do they have the bullet points with the portions of the cultural resources element in there?
Oops. What do you, I'm just, I'm a little.
Oh, sorry, the, so the, the cultural resources element, the.
The current version?
Oh, it's, it, it, it's got, it's the, it's the packet. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure that the commissioners, the, the planning commission memo has the information that I was talking about.
Oh, the best practices bullet points?
Correct.
Yes, those are on pages nine and ten. And then, the Landmark Board, Landmark Preservation Board of Feedback is on ten and eleven.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Sorry, I was, I was going through multiple tabs and I lost track of that particular tab. So, but that's just a, that's a very brief overview of, of this, of this component of a comprehensive plan. And so, I believe now is questions. Is that correct?
So, commissioners, questions or comments on the cultural resources element? Looking around the table. Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. My question is, has there been a surfacing of history around the eighteen fifty's and eighteen sixty's? I'm thinking of some things that might be pretty, actually difficult to look at. Wars with participants involving settlers and native people. Also, I think there's some Confederate history around here. I know that there used to be a marker that was citing Jefferson Davis and his role in building roads through here when he was actually part of the US government as opposed to being a Confederate person. So, I think there's a lot of really, really interesting and really difficult history there. And I think in twenty twenty, it was identified that there was a marker there that was citing Jefferson Davis as just a regular person. And one of the activists took it down, actually, a local activist. And, I mean, I'm glad it's gone, but I'm wondering what is done to actually look at that history and see what is done with it.
I mean, who, who placed the marker? I mean, this is the first I've ever heard of this.
Sarah Gustafson here. I think it was like the daughters of the colonists or the daughters of the revolution. I could probably send that.
It was probably the DAR. That's pretty common. Yes.
So, I think to speak to the first point, I think, just to be clear, were you referring to the treaty wars of the eight, of the mid eighteen fifty's, Commissioner?
Yes, and I do apologize. I really haven't probably described it very well.
Really putting me on the spot. So, one of the things that and one of the board members, one of the Landmark Preservation Board members in particular is very interested in native peoples' history as it relates to Bothell. And it is a process that we've only really begun to really look at making sure that what is currently written is accurate as much as possible. But to also realize that the, that some of the components of this history are, are not for us to write. And to recognize the sovereignty of each tribe that has prehistoric and historic interest in Bothell. It's a very, very, very complex issue. I'm actually planning to have one of our cultural ethnographers speak to the Landmark Board members about this particular instance. To speak to a monument that was placed by a private group. Very, very, very tough subjects. The, the state, to the best of my knowledge, like, we do not designate, the state or locals, for that matter, do not designate monuments for that precise reason. And so, I think in that particular instance, I, not knowing the exact wording of the, of the, of the signage or the, the marker, it would be tough to say, you know, whether or not that was, whether or not Jefferson Davis was identified as the role that everybody knows him most as, which is the president of the Confederacy, but also the fact that he did have a career with the US military prior to him becoming president of the Confederacy. So, it's a very, it's a very, very challenging subject, but we're only just now getting into the undertold and untold stories at this point, particularly as they, as they relate to cultural minorities in Bothell other than Native Americans. And that is an ongoing process that we're currently working on.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? I think one of our challenges is we do have very short memories. And most of what people know about Bothell, if it goes back a few decades, that's a long time. So, really filling out the story, I think, would be important and useful. So, we look forward to the work you do on this.
Thank you.
Anything else?
The final section is just talking about the urban design element. So, I'll just talk a little bit about what we have in there currently and kind of what is urban design in general. And then, Ben and I have talked together about some potential recommendations for the revised element.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Alsabrook, for that presentation.
So, this is some information that's in the current element that I think is just some really good general information about what is urban design. And I'll let Ben jump in as he might want to, knowing that it's a passion that is, if you want to talk about it. So, the three kind of major components we've identified in the current plan that I think make good sense are, have to do with scale. So, at the kind of high level is spatial structure. So, where are uses located in combination or in separation? How are they oriented? So, that kind of larger scale view. In the middle, we have urban components. So, that's things like streetscapes, parks, facade, some of those more kind of human scale components. And then, urban details. I think the photo I included is from a building I don't think exists on Main Street anymore, at least not in that form. But it's just to talk to some of those smaller details like colors, textures, lighting, different materials that we use, different types of plants you might decide to use in one place or another. And all of those kind of work together to create what we can think about when we think about urban design. So, in terms of recommended priorities, we have a number of things we've been talking about. One being very simply recognizing projects that are completed from the current element and making sure we're removing those and identifying any new potential projects. Recognizing the ongoing visioning work with EFG, as you might have seen in the hallway and what that space could look like, both at a temporary way and then in the future. And we know that was a very popular topic with the public, both at the open house event as well as with the, and I think it was a survey we had online was very, very well participated in. So, that was exciting. Also, like we've talked about tonight, we know that we're having a extension with the Swift Line eventually and we're re-envisioning what that corridor might look like. We're having early discussions with the transportation team about safety components, but also wanting to think about how urban design also influences safety, how it influences how those corridors read and are used and utilized. Reviewing just generally recommendations for current best practices as they change over time. We want to develop some language around sort of site and neighborhood design and planning, particularly in knowing that in some way, shape or form, middle housing will be coming down the pipe, pipeline and respecting that that infill is going to have a potential impact. And how do we think about best practices in site design and neighborhood design to incorporate some of those new types of structures? And then, as we're doing with all of the plan, we're reviewing it against, you know, racial equity and environmental justice best practices. Urban design has a lot of climate change related best practices when, like Ben mentioned, thinking about the urban heat island effect, the impact of trees for shade, particularly in pedestrian spaces. So, making sure we're reflecting that in the plan for urban design. Talking a little bit about some of the cultural and economic displacement factors when it comes to urban design. And that really again comes down to making sure we're working with the community when we're developing some of this to make sure that it's not going to have a negative impact. Accessibility and mobility are very important when it comes to urban design. We spent some time talking about universal design practices when it comes to public spaces especially. Looking at potential language in support of changes to home occupations that we talked about. When was that? Back in, I think, September, when we talked about the economic design element. Are there some ways to create some design flexibilities for home occupations that will allow them to have a more successful type of business, will better fit maybe a lot, larger diversity of neighborhood scale businesses? And then, kind of a fun idea that Sarah Frost had is we have these old notice boards throughout the city that are not really being utilized anymore and are there opportunities to utilize those? Maybe not all of them, some of the key ones that are, have some high visibility to incorporate maybe artwork from local artisans or artists that can be a kind of almost like a pop-up shops for local artists in a way to kind of take advantage of infrastructure we already have. And also help with the art commission, get some, get some stuff to take a look at. I know they'd be excited to do something like that. And that was kind of it. It's, we have a, it's a pretty lengthy element currently. I think there's some really good stuff in there, but wanting to make sure that we're updating it to reflect some of these things and making sure we're looking out again to that twenty-year space of what we want to see. And I just included this image from the Canyon Park SubArea Plan, because I think it's a really good mapping tool for urban design elements. This is about the facade requirements in Canyon Park. So, there's different levels of types of facades, just because it is more of a hybrid code. So, there's some talk about, you know, high visibility street corner nodes and trail connections and things like that. So, I thought it was a good kind of visual for how we think about that higher spatial level as well as that kind of medium level of urban design. And so, that's all I had in terms of our recommendations. Would love to get some feedback and any thoughts from you all.
So, Commissioner, comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
I just have a question. So, particularly in terms of review against climate-related best practices for urban design. And you talked about streetscapes and things like that in terms of trees. But what about, does the, say, electric charging infrastructure fit into that? And are there any plans to do more of that, especially in the downtown area?
That has definitely been a subject of discussion between us and the Public Works Department. I know there's our two main agencies that do our, that provide electricity. Both have discussions around pilot, potential pilot programs. So, we'll, we're meeting with them to just start having some of those discussions about what they're doing, how we might be able to partner. I know I've had some discussions about maybe looking at areas where it would be easy to integrate that infrastructure. So, I think that definitely could be a potential urban dat, design concern for sure that we can maybe have a policy around it in terms of maybe site-specific design when we're looking at new developments. Are there ways to integrate that in or when we're retrofitting existing areas too? So, that's a good comment of a potential policy that could be really impactful.
Other commissioners? Mr. Westerbeck?
Christian Westerbeck here. Thank you, Senior Planner Matt. This is great. Of course, I love urban, urban planning, urban design. Something that's just been really come to the forefront, I think, of urban planning, urban design lately is this tying in the transportation element, specifically how big we're making roads, how fast, how dangerous. We're seeing a real crisis right now with collisions with bikers and pedestrians and stuff because we made our roads basically a bunch of speedways for eighty years. And so, I think, I, what I'm always hoping for on my wish list is that the transportation engineers and those who use the MUTCD manual, I think is what it's called, the green, the green book and all that stuff. You guys correct me if I'm wrong. Really need to all get on the same page and think about, along with fire as well. I, there, it's always been ironic to me that the fire trucks require these huge roads that probably create, unfortunately, create business for them. Because people drive really fast and then they have to have fire trucks come out and save them or aid cars come and, and pick body parts up off the road. So, I don't think there's been enough of an interface between traffic engineers in their own silos and urban planners in their own silos. Traffic engineers say, you need a hundred foot, a hundred foot wide right away, whatever. And, you know, cars need to be able to go, you know, at this X level of service. And, you know, you'll probably lose a few people here and there, but by God, people will get home two minutes faster. I mean, those days have got to end. We've just got to, you know, push transit, narrow roads, trees, narrow lanes. I know we talked about narrow lanes at some point with Steve Morikawa. Anyway, I just, I think that really has to be, should be part of an urban, urban design element recommendation. Whether we get it in here or not, that's just, that's my, my fervent wish is that we start to, the traffic engineers start to talk to the urban planners about how we, we make a safer built environment. about how we we make a safer built environment. It was what a horrible, horrible thing that happened in a suburban neighborhood in here in Bothell, just what day before, two days before Halloween, child died, got hit by a car on a huge wide street up by the mayor's house, in fact, uh, Queens, Queensgate. Yep, they were coming home from a trunk or treat event. And, um, and I know that neighborhood because I went to school with a whole bunch of people there back in the 80s because I'm old. And, um, I mean, people will speed through there like crazy because it's just huge wide roads they laid out in the 60s or something like that. So anyway, just something hopefully we'll be thinking about going forward as we, as we continue to lay Bothell out and we have opportunities to change and to adapt and to to refit our roads and our new developments.
Thank you. Other commissioner comments, questions?
This is Commissioner Kurt. Um, one of the other parts of urban design that has been really interesting that's come to the forefront during our work in Canyon Park has been connectivity, um, and sizing of blocks. I think that's kind of a central element of the recent planning and I'd like to see it, um, recognized in the overall comprehensive plan.
Others? Couple of thoughts. Uh, we talked about incorporating middle housing. And one of the concerns we've heard in our discussions about middle housing from some of the publics is compatibility. So I think really being intentional about how middle housing needs to fit into its neighborhoods. And it can, it can be done, but, you know, that's the fear we hear. So we should address that head on. And I think one of the things that would mitigate that is moving on to the idea of heat islands and really breaking things up and addressing the the heat island question. So I'd suggest we look at those things. Um, the other kind of sparked an interest, a thought on my part, you talked about the boards and art. Um, I had a little experience in my prior life with public art. And one of the things that always generates the most excitement, my experience was, was involving the schools. And if schools adopted the board nearest them and they rotated things, you get the kids involved, it gets their parents involved, it gets the community involved. That, think about outreach there and hooking the schools into adopting those boards. Um, sure, if you have local artists that rotate through as well, but there's always kids art. You know, if you give them a, you give them a platform, it'll, it'll be used. So think about that.
Yeah, I really like that. And it also makes me think about too, some of our goals with increasing our connection with the university and with Cascadia. And I'm sure there could some opportunity there too. That would be great.
Other questions or comments looking around the table and or Zoom participant? No, all right. Anything else you'd like to add on this item? Oh.
Yeah, Sarah Gustafson here. I, did I, I'm sorry, did I hear that a, a child passed away in, um, Queensgate just in the last few days? I, I think we might need to make space to talk about this as a planning commission or at least consider it. Because if this is happening, I think all city bodies that could have any ability to change this in the future, to the extent that it's sensitive to the family, I think we should make some space to talk about this.
Yeah, I don't have all the details. Um, it was a, um, it was, uh, I think it was Saturday and, um, they were returning from a trunk or treat event, I think, and crossing road, um, just, um, west of North Shore Middle School in the neighborhoods back there. And I, again, I, I have not read the, the news article or anything. This is what I learned from some other um, people passing information around. Uh, but there was, was word that, um, I think, I believe two children were hit and one did pass. Yeah, I know. It's terrible. Should go find information and make sure that, but I, I did, I did see that part.
Well, it does go to Commissioner Westerbeck's earlier comments about roadways and speed. And I, I don't have any, uh, data on this, but my sense is since the pandemic, driving has gotten worse. People drive faster, uh, they're more careless. I know the city has moved to put, uh, traffic cameras in, I think, five locations around schools, um, which I, I think is, is a step, uh, to bring a little more consciousness to that. Uh, I'd like to see traffic cameras at red lights and all sorts of other places to just make people be more intentional about how they drive. Because, um, I'm a frequent walker and getting people to stop for you in a crosswalk is a rarity these days. So, yeah, it's, I don't know where we go with that, but certainly worth recognizing.
Yeah, I know we're veering into, sorry, Commissioner Westerbeck here. I know we're veering into traffic and that's not you guys necessarily. So we're probably off, off tangent here, but, um, you know, we are in planning commission and we do, we'll deal with that stuff. I couldn't help but think that, um, people hate speed bumps, but they work. I think that might have, might have helped in, in that particular neighborhood, but maybe I'm getting ahead of myself there. I don't know.
Other comments? I know it's a topic that gives us pause and it's tough to move on from, but I'm not sure else, where else we would go at this point. Well, thank you for bringing that up, uh, Commissioner Gustafson. Thank you for having us recognize that and spend a little time giving it thought. I think we're probably done with our study session unless there's anything else you want to bring to us.
No, that's the end of the topics we had for tonight. Um, again, like always, if you have additional feedback, you want to send me by email, I can communicate to Ben or Adam, please let me know.
All right. Well, thank you. So our next agenda item is reports from staff. Have anything to bring with us? I know you're going to talk about the open house later, so we can recognize it happened and move on.
Yeah, just we had a really great night. Um, I think our final attendance count was 133 people, which was really awesome.
That's very impressive.
Um, so we were really happy about that. Uh, it seemed to go really well. Uh, had some really great conversations. So excited to share more about that in December.
No other reports from staff, but that reports from members?
This is Commissioner Kurt. I just want to recognize and thank, uh, staff for planning, um, childcare, for planning refreshments. All that stuff was awesome and I think it drove engagement. So thank you for being really intentional with planning, um, planning around planning.
And on that, I also need to give a shout out to Sarah Frost. She did an incredible job. We're happy that she gets to have a little bit of rest now.
I will add, I was there. I know Chair Kiernan was there, um, Commissioner Gustafson. And, uh, yeah, it was, uh, it was really encouraging. People were having a lot of good conversations. I mean, you guys were there, you know, but, um, I was, it was exciting and then I've kind of seen everything and done as much as I wanted, but I kind of stuck around longer just because it was fun to be around so many people talking about the future of their city. So it was, that was a really cool, uh, event. And I, like, uh, Carson said, it seems like it went really well.
All right, uh, the reports from members? Seeing none. I would just comment, I, I was away for a bit and the walkable areas of cities are always the most alive. I mean, I've been, whether they be small towns that have just small streets that are close to traffic or they closed around the Acropolis in Athens, so that whole loop is walkable. And my understanding is it was very controversial, some of the residents opposed it and now they love it. So sometimes it's getting people over the hump and used to that. What was feared becomes an amenity. So there are advocates for that on this commission and I live on the council as well. And, and my experience bears it out that it is a good thing. Other, uh, reports from members? Don't know that we have anything for the council coming out of this. So you, you mentioned that an item was taken off the next agenda. Do we still plan to have a meeting on the 15th?
Uh, at this point, no, I don't think we have anything planned for the 15th.
Okay, so that being said, our next meeting would be December 6th?
Yes, and on that night, we'll be talking about the capital facilities element, uh, utilities. I always forget, and then the human services element, which is a new standalone element.
Okay. So there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Kurt, move to adjourn.
Second? Commissioner Gustafson?
Commissioner Gustafson, I second. Thank you.
All right, all in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned at, uh, 7:40 PM. Our next meeting, as we just said, will be December 6th. So thank you all and thank you Kirsten and Ben and interesting discussion.